Morning everyone. So, morning everyone. We are here today for the August 15th City Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, the director is going to read some preamble for the meeting. So, Callie, and then we'll jump in. We also are going to start a little unusually today with three public art items because of some scheduling issues of both some artists and Tara. So, we'll, we'll take those first on the agenda.
In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's Open Meeting Law in Section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conduct their meetings in a manner modeled after Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusals from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Proper channels for comments are listed below. Communication with members of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by the Wednesday noon deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to any scheduled meeting. Proper channels for public comment include sending an email to thecityplanning@clevelandohio.gov address with a comment or a letter, calling and/or leaving a message at 216-664-2210, or sending a letter or dropping off comments at City Hall 601 Lakeside Avenue Suite 501, Cleveland, Ohio 44114. Our meeting rules and procedures are that the chair will call each agenda item and then each applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentation. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning staff to summarize design review advisory committee recommendations, if applicable, and any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair and any individual providing public comment is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request a recommendation from staff, if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and project review. Any commission member except the chair may make a motion at any point after an agenda item has been called.
Thank you. Evelyn, call the roll.
Anthony?
Present.
Luca?
Present.
Curry?
Present.
Akrae Scott is not present. Sergeant?
Present.
And Slive?
We have a quorum. First item is to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. I'll need to abstain, but we'll need a motion for the minutes. We have them in front of us if anyone needs them. I have them here as well.
Here, I move for approval of the August 1st, 2025 minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Abstain.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And Slive?
Yes.
Motion carries. First item on the agenda, as I said, we have three public art items, is the Public Art Program, "The Art of Noticing" at Clark Recreation Center. This is at 5706 Clark Avenue. This was approved by the Public Art Committee. I believe we have both Tara and the artist here. Are you, Shelley? Come on up for both of you. I need to swear you, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Yes.
Tara, are you going to go first, or do you want to present first?
Yes, I'm going to. This isn't the correct presentation. Okay, I'll, I'll just, this isn't the correct presentation. But I'll go ahead and wing it. This project is through the Public Art Program, Chapter 186. We do have one and a half percent that was dedicated towards a public art component. And this project is in Ward 15 in the Stockyards neighborhood. Clark Recreation Center renovation had a public art budget of $80,000. Savannah Studio was selected artists out of 12 eligible submissions and three interviewed artists. The artwork was approved by the Public Art Committee on August 12th. Okay, I have pictures, contextual views, and aerial view in the correct presentation that you all aren't able to see right now. So, since you can't see it, we're just going to skip through all of those slides that I have prepared, and I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Shelley for her portion of the presentation. I don't know what happened to mine. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Okay, Shelley.
Yeah, so my name's Shelley Svanovic. I was a trained painter in college, and I taught high school ceramics. And applying to this project, I really wanted to combine my work as an educator in the community. I also contract teach through Center for Arts Inspired Learning. I teach integrated arts programming, mainly based on social emotional learning. So, I'm, I had this dream of combining a painted mural with a ceramic component. And this project here, a couple of pictures, is the wall on the side of the Clark Rec Center where through those doors is an indoor pool with a nice little cement slab where tables and loungers will go. And that space is actually enclosed with a little gate there. In the future, the parking lot will be a park with a splash pad. And you can go to the next slide. And then just down the street is the new Clark Elementary building. So, this space is really going to be a nice hub for community and family and children. You can see kind of the view looking at the parking lot to the left, straight, and to the right, that that area is kind of tucked in a little bit. I want you to notice that brick wall with the windows there that you can see a little bit more from the street. That was not in the original proposal, but Mark DeLuque and I were on the site, and we had some ideas for that that you'll see in a little bit. The pictures down there below are just kind of the 360 from looking out to the street, down west, right across from the rec center, some colored houses, some cool plants, and just east. You can go to the next slide. So, a couple, like, two years ago, you know, I had this concept of, there's a lot of information that we have access to right now, a lot of good things that we see a lot of times, and a lot of big, hard things. And a lot of what I teach in my programs are coping skills and that sense of, how do you deal with every day? How do you find joy? How do you, how do you move forward with what you have right in front of you, what's in your control? And so, last November, I had a show called "The Art of Noticing," and I had the public submit little moments of their life. So, all those quotes there are quotes that were submitted from the public. Quiet mornings, the first one, awake, the dim glow of an ambulance room. And I started working in mosaic, and I attached these titles to the pieces of work. And I really liked the concept of mosaics of a bunch of little things coming together to create a bigger picture. They remind me of a lot of things. I see a lot of, like, streets in mosaic, like neighborhoods with the grout lines, composition, color palette. I'm more of an abstract painter, and so I kind of applied the same concept to mosaic. And with this concept of opening it up to the community on a broader scale to really generate that community engagement, foster connection, promote optimism, but also creating something dynamic and tactile that feels like it could last generations, and, you know, you could see the community in it for years and years to come. So, the concept was a botanical element with some expressive workmaking with physical mosaic components. And I brought a sample here of what that could possibly look like, and I'll explain that with the material. So, you can go to the next slide. Community engagement was a big aspect of, you know, the importance of this work for me. So, last May and June, I had a ceramic residency at Lincoln West where they built tiles based on core values, and we talked about abstracting and symbolism. In June, we had an event at the Pivot Center where I introduced the project, kind of the concept of little moments, and we made paper mosaics to start translating how emotions and experiences can be represented more abstractly. And then we also worked on just the design itself, kind of offering those parameters and allowing the community to express themselves that way. At the end of August, we will have a free ceramic workshop at my studio where the, the public can sign up for a slot to actually make the physical ceramic tiles that will go into the mosaic. Go ahead to the next slide. And the design. So, what you can see here is the background is painted, and then all those elements on top of it will look like this. This is one foot. If you look in the middle, that blue one is eight feet large, so there's going to be quite a few large components. And go ahead, well, on the bottom right there, you can see that's the wall that peeks out. So, Mark and I were talking about, you know, a little peekaboo. So, from the street, you can see a little bit of it that'll pull you in kind of around to the side of the building. Each of the little moments are going to be, or each of the mosaic components are going to be attached to a little moment submitted from the public that you'll see in a second. Go ahead to the next slide. And then I worked with Andy from RW Clark. So, he's the site contractor. So, it's been really nice to work with, you know, the city and the contractors themselves on the project. So, the base of this is a PVC base with the wetting board actually connected inside of it. So, we kind of created a system. I've been working with professional tileers, the contractors, to make sure that this will last. That was a big priority for me, is that it won't fail. So, I've tested the tiles, we've tested the material. I've actually froze this in my freezer and thawed it a couple times to really get a sense of the weather in Cleveland. You know, I just kind of make sure. And then it'll be attached with Z clips onto the wall. And what I love about that, too, is if anything should happen to them, you can easily remove them. My studio's in the Hildebrandt Building just down the street, so that's my community. I'm super close to it, and being able to bring things to my studio anytime to kind of maintain them. We have a maintenance plan for five years. The, the painted mural itself is going to be prepped and primed by Cleveland Mural Co., Chad. They have a ton of experience, and then painted with a masonry paint to make sure that that brick wall can breathe. We also have plans to seal it with the grout sealer and a breathable, like, wax-based anti-graffiti for the painted section. One more slide. And then this is just a little bit more of the context of the pieces, so that that top right picture is actually all the color palettes that match the little moments for each component of the mural. I also had people submit names of loved ones, and so all those names are stamped on the ceramic pieces, so you'll be able to find those in the mural itself. And then, really, just with that community event, just kind of fostering that with the community where they can actually find their piece in the mural as well. My hope is just that it's a lasting, meaningful piece. I'm from Cleveland, it means a lot to me, and I hope that the community will feel the same.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
My name is Luis Rivas. I'm the Arts and Culture Coordinator at Metro West, and this project, and my letter of support is actually about that. This project falls within our service area, and I just want to be here, not only for another presentation, but to also support Shelley and say that she's done a phenomenal job in engaging the community and making sure that this is publicly known as well, so.
Appreciate it. Member, questions? Comments?
I will, I will move approval of the project as presented at the Clark Rec Center.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? I just want to commend you, and thank you. I'm very excited to see it. I think there'll be a lot to learn from this because we don't see these kind of murals very much, so the idea of the 3D component of it. So, we'll keep an eye on it and, and see, not just how it performs in terms of, but, but how it looks and feels. So, thank you. Been exciting.
I think Tara had a comment online.
Tara?
Thank you, I did. I just forgot to say that we also received an email of support from Councilwoman Spencer. Thank you.
Clark is in Spencer's Ward? Oh, interesting.
Yadda wampus.
Yeah, it's like right across the street from, I think, Jasmine Santana's Ward. It's a weird shift over there.
Where does it end up next time?
Or changes, or boundaries.
Anyway, that's okay.
I believe, I believe it's in the, I believe it's in the ward, don't quote me on this, but I believe it is in, like, the ward that is with, etwa, with the.
No, it wouldn't.
No, it's, it's four, it's four to eleven.
Eleven.
Four to eleven.
Okay.
But also, I'm, I'm rough on the numbers.
All right, call the roll.
Anthony?
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And Slav?
Yes.
And congratulations on finishing your public service fellowship. So I did know that. I, I was wondering actually if you were pretending that was a conflict, but I decided it was not. So thank you.
Madam Chair, I must recuse myself.
Oh, from the next one. Okay. So please note that Commission Member Fuker is recusing himself. The next one is Northeast 2025-019. This is the Raphael Valdivisial mural. This is 7411 St. Clair Avenue. This is, has been recommended for approval, but there were a couple of suggestions. So please take note of the two about finding a way to wrap it and using a lighter color paint option on the column and corner. So if you can address those, that would be great. And is Nancy here from Land Studio or online?
Yes, I am online.
Is there anybody else who's presenting this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
And Tara, would you like to go first?
I'll just say that it was approved by the Northeast Design Review on October, I'm sorry, August 5th. And we also reached out to Councilman Harrison. I did not hear back from his office, but he has been working closely with St. Clair Superior Development Corporation. And I'm in support of the mural and its application on the building as what you will see presented in the presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Take it away, Nancy. Your slides are up.
Yes. Next slide, please. This is the aerial view of the location of where the mural will be. Next slide. This is a street view facing west. Next slide. The street view facing east. Next slide. This is a picture, a view of the actual wall. So the, this is not the most current one. But so as the design will not be on the column, the, after the, after I presented to the Northeast Design Review, I sent information to the funder and it was brought to my attention that the design will not be included on, on the column. Next, next slide, please. This is the actual design. It'll, it's in Ward 10. It would be a painted application. The owner is Gary Browning. He, we do have an executed MOU with the building owner who has approved it. And the artist is Raphael Valdivisial. So next slide. The artist was born in Quito, Ecuador and is a Cleveland Heights resident for the last 22 years. Raphael creates intricate compositions that contain hundreds of figures or faces layered into imaginary spaces that evoke a sense of teeming wildness and intertwine themes of human joy and struggle. His travels in Latin America, Europe, and the Middle East inspired his work and sharpened his attention for lines, shapes, and colors. His artist statement is, "The goal of this mural is to celebrate diversity through the harmony of colors within a visual poetry of symbols and forms. By opening a window into the creative power of human expression, may it bring vibrancy, inspire creativity, and foster a dialogue of peace and unity." Next slide. The mural has been shared at the St. Clair Superior Development Corporation's community meeting in May, a community meeting on June 4th at St. Thomas Aquinas School, a meeting at the Slovenian National Home on June 24th, and a community meeting at Kavazic Recreation Center on June 25th. The design, the, the design has also been shared with Councilman Harrison to get his approval. St. Clair Superior Development Corporation will be the steward of this mural. Next slide. Thank you.
Commission members, questions, comments? Tara, do you have any additional comment?
No, that wasn't the most updated presentation either.
Correct.
I don't know if you got the dimensions, where in the shifting of where the mural is. Okay.
Yeah, the dimensions, yeah, it's, it's 110 feet in length and 16 feet height. It goes from the, the, if you can go back a couple slides, please, to the wall.
Yeah.
Please, right there. So it will stop where you see on the left-hand side where the windows are. It will not be included. It'll go, start from that gray. It's, that's actually brick. It'll start at that gray and head to the right. And both the, or all three garage doors will be included, but the man door will not be included.
Thank you. I think that's a nicer solution and I think not including the common, the column makes a lot of sense. So I understand the logic. So it's really just a canvas on the building.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I will move approval of the project as presented at 7411 St. Clair.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And Slav?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Can't wait to see it.
Thank you. Yes.
I will get Commission Member Fuker back. The next item is an additional mural. It's called the Sunflower Mural. My favorite flower, actually. At 4919 Store Avenue. This is in Stockyards. Welcome back. Welcome back again, because we saw you maybe a month ago. No, or, yeah, no, I, we saw you a month ago or so. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
And this project was approved with some consideration of some additional tuck pointing as needed and if possible. And Tara, you want to go first on this one, too?
Yeah, thank you. This one is not actually in a design review district. And this particular mural is adjacent to the, the Transformative Arts Fund because it's the same lead artist, but it's not funded through that particular program. I did get an email of support from Councilwoman Santana, who's Ward us in. And I'm also in support of the mural. I think it's a great application in consideration of the condition of the brick and graffiti on the building. I would just recommend any necessary tuck pointing. But I'm gonna turn it over to Luis and Adio. Thank you.
All right. I think we'll get started. As Tara mentioned, the, this project, although it is adjacent to the Transformers Art Fund, is actually not being funded by the Transformers Art Fund. This is part of a late, larger, kind of greater transformation effort that is being held on store. Obviously, as a CDC, we have the responsibility of engaging and leading some of these efforts. So we decided to do that through the lens of art and announcing the potential investments that are coming into store and the different projects that are in motion from the city. And we'll get timeline later on in confirmation. But some of these initiatives are being presented and are moving forward. For example, we have a sidewalk initiative that reconstructs some of the sidewalks, plants some trees on the sidewalks alongside some of the work that Ariel and his Transformers Art Fund is doing. So although this, this is adjacent to some of the work, I think it's important to click, to, to distinguish that this is not part of the Transformers Art Fund, but very much adjacent, very much a continuation of some of the work that's being done there. So next slide. So this is an overhead view of where the location is gonna be. As you can see, it is at the intersection of 50th and Store. Now, this location particularly is important because there will also be additional, an additional three sculptures at that intersection. So as you can see in the arrow, this is the main bill, this is the building that we're gonna be doing a mural on. But just to give additional context, those, in those kind of grayish spaces, there are three vacant lots that Ariel will be leasing and acquiring to, to install public artwork. So this intersection is really important to us. And this is actually where we're gonna do a large-scale festival September 6th in order to make the community aware of some of the public artwork and different initiatives that are coming onto Store. So this is gonna, as you can see, you can see a wall. It's kind of graffiti, a little, a little bit in a rougher condition. And overall, just an eyesore to, to the community. And Store Avenue serves as a major connection from Fulton to 65th. So this is, and that is part of one of the reasons why we select this store as such an important avenue. So this will definitely add to the aesthetic of Store. Next slide. And then here we have the actual design projected on the building itself. And then I'll let Ariel kind of speak to the process and what he has planned.
Hello, Ariel. The mural is a sunflower on a spine and that says Spina Florae, which is a series that, that we've been evolving for a while now. And the date, across from it, is gonna be a spine flower sculpture. So it'll be a nice connection of resilience and the connection of humanity and botany. On a technical side, we're looking at using masonry paint for the, the underbody. And then most of the color will come in the, in the form of aerosol. We're thinking of using like that taupe-ish for the background color so that we can utilize most of the masonry as like the main base and do layers on top with levels of transparency so that we're minimizing the, the blockage of, of the concrete. And it also depends on what the final solution on the wall setup is. If they're gonna do a full glass or they're just tuck pointing certain areas. That's up to the building owner, so.
Thank you, thank you. The.
And additionally, we just have some context photos here. I'm just showing some, some of the areas. You can see the three adjacent lots of like art installations. And then again, yeah, this wall has been heavily graffitied over the years. It's been something that Metro West has seen. We have a green team that is out there on a weekly, daily basis cleaning this area up. So this will just be a ni- nice addition to that.
Is that lot, the land bank owned with the stones?
Yes.
We could plant some giant sunflowers there, too. So you know, there's that artist in the far west side, you know who I'm talking about? Who in like Westlake, who takes over plots and then does like hundreds of sunflowers. Have you ever seen him? Yeah. And you just show up and they're like, there. You've never seen the guy? So anyway, I love it. It's like my spirit mural.
That'll be for the green spaces.
My spirit mural. All right. Any questions or comments?
I'll just say, I think Store, Store is kind of like a very like beige bland street. There's no greenery, like if there's the power lines right overhead. Like if you were trying to find a stereotypical Rust Belt picture, like you'd almost go like Store on a cloudy day. So this is, I think this is a corridor that really needs some vibrancy and this is gonna help. So if there's other opportunities along Store, I think we should find them because it's, it's a, it's a integral little connection, but it's, it's just a, a good, good love to build some character along it, so.
It'll be a pop, for sure. Top of color. Was that a motion?
So I will, we'll move to approve the Sunflower mural as presented at 4919 Store.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Uh, Slav?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Hopefully we'll see you again soon. Now we're moving on to the design review. The first item, we have a couple that have, are no longer, we're not doing the conditional use that you may have seen. We're going straight to design review. That one was postponed. This one is 38, 3482 East 70th Street. It's a demolition. Are you Kaylin?
Yes.
At the kind of, at the land bank. This was approved with our conditions on 8/12. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for having me today. Go to the next slide here. So we just kind of start with some site contest, context at the district level here. The little star kind of to the north there is the location we're looking at. So the land bank acquired this vacant two-family structure last January from state forfeiture. Structure was originally condemned in 2009. After going through forfeiture, the property has changed hands multiple times since then, found its way back to forfeiture and took ownership earlier this year. The original structure was built in 1910 as a two-family dwelling with a basement and crawl space. There was a garage added later in the 60s. Next page, next slide. So let's just more some context. That's Union. So we're just about 150, 200 feet or so, something like that north of Union here, across from the pocket park. Next slide. So this is some of the context around. You can see the little yellow dot is the house. There is some mixed use in industrial and commercial along Union right there. The house itself is kind of tucked away behind, you know, some other, some other houses and some, some trees and other greenery. It's really not visible from the street at this point. Next slide. So just the existing conditions, the street level, the house is right in the middle. The bottom side is looking across the street. You know, the top side to the left is Union. The bottom side would be to the right. All right, next slide. And this would be looking from the intersection of 70th and Union. Top line is down, East 70th, and the one is across the street. So as you can see, it's, it's really not visible at the moment from there. And those are the kind of street you mix use retail. And to the left, I believe it's a container commercial business down there. Next slide. So here's the actual house that we're looking at. The building is in extremely poor condition. It's been completely gutted inside. The roof is deteriorating. There are missing doors and windows along the siding that's falling off or has been stolen. Next slide. In the interior, there's no HVAC system, usable plumbing fixtures or electrical system, as can be seen through the photos here. Next slide. I think the biggest thing with this one really is the foundation. If you look on the one side, it's really starting to heave and give way in multiple points. You know, that with the other conditions of the house, making a pretty big hazard at the moment right now. Next slide. So in conclusion, the entire structure really is beyond repair. Since it falls within a design review district, you know, we request authorization from the city to proceed with demolition. And, you know, this is the slide of, you know, what we normally do with the sites, getting rid of all the hard paved surfaces, the structure, you know, grading it out, planting seed and straw specifications.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of 3482 East 70th Street for a demolition as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Slav?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is Northeast Design Review. This is 2025-009. This is Sherwood Monument Signs. There are two of them. This is at 15500 Lake Shore Boulevard. This was approved for final approval with a couple of recommend, is recommended for final approval. I don't know if these are conditions or are these just suggestions? It doesn't quite say. So we'll, we'll take a look at them as you present. There were a number of both two from the design review and three from staff. So if you could address those, it'll just help us as we decide. Have you seen them? The comments? Yeah, okay.
I think we're gonna actually start with Shannon has a presentation on the variances required for this project.
And then maybe you could address those, so, because they don't, they say final approval, but they don't say if these are, are conditions. And we'll go from there. First, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay. Shannon, are you on?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm here.
Good morning.
Shannon Leonard, Chief Zoning Administrator. I will walk you through the signage here. Next slide. So the applicant is proposing two 14-square-foot internally illuminated identification monument signs at this location. And the pictures here, you can kind of see what that looks like. Um, and the pictures here, you can kind of see what that looks like in front of this building, next slide please. Uh, the property is own multifamily, you'll remember this is a large lake shore tower, uh, that came through for redevelopment a few years ago. Um, and also had the large, uh, wall sign, next slide please. Uh, this is just to give you an aerial context of the, um, uh, the apartment building that was redeveloped, next slide. Uh, why are we here today? As you may recall, um, the sign code will give you all the ability to vary the sign code, um, in accordance to, uh, design compatibility. Based on adopted design guidelines and a minimum variation necessary, uh, to either be more strict or less strict than what our sign code requires. Next slide please. Uh, and so this is the variance they are proposing, um, six feet and three feet. They need a variance for fourteen feet and seventeen feet from the right away. Uh, this is especially important in terms of sight lines coming in and out of the, uh, egress, uh, here at this site. Uh, next slide please. Uh, and so the considerations that you'll consider while deciding whether these variances are, um, approvable would be is, does this result in signage that is better suited to the design of the subject property or nearby properties? Does it result in signage that follows adopted design review guidelines? And is the variance minimum necessary to ensure design compatibility with surrounding properties? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would you have, you want to present anymore?
Yeah, yeah, I have my presentation. So basically the summary of the project is, uh, if you could go to the next slide, yeah. Uh, the installation of two new monument signs at Shorewood Apartments. Each sign is designed to enhance the property's visibility, wayfinding and overall presence within the neighborhood. Um, it has internally, uh, illuminated lettering, just the letters itself, not anything else on the design. And it just, it will contribute to a more professional looking street, you know, and it'll give a, uh, more of a modern look to our buildings. So, uh, next slide please. So a little bit about our company, um, specifically with Shorewood, we took over this, uh, development a few years ago. And we have really, really spent a lot of time, money and effort to, to really make these apartment nice. But they're not like luxury apartments that are overpriced, they're a blend of affordability and, uh, and luxury. And, uh, we also put a lot of work into keeping our, our property safe, you know, the whole parking lot is gated. We have, uh, security twenty-four seven, we have, uh, um, uh, an amazing maintenance team that will, you know, help everyone out. And it's just a, it's just more better options in the area for people that want to live in the area. So that's what we do and that's what we've been doing with this property specifically. If you go to the next slide. So the benefits of the project, it's not just about how it looks. It's not just us looking at our old signs and saying, well, we need an update. The, the benefits of the project, the way we think about it is, is telling a story of the property. You know, we don't look at these signs as just an update on the outside, we look at them as a, a marketing tool. You know, we want people to see, uh, our signs before they see the building, you know? Because if you look at the building itself, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily be able to tell, uh, all the updates we've put into it. All the renovated units, all the updated hallways, lobbies, the updated balconies, everything we've put into the building. But when you see a nice, clean, new, modern sign before you see the building itself, it's gonna tell you, oh, well, maybe this, maybe there's more to this building I'm not seeing, maybe this is nicer than it, than it actually looks. So that's kind of the way we think about it. So yeah, if we could go, yeah, to the next, these are the existing conditions of what we have. Um, obviously these, it's, it's in need of, uh, a dire upgrade. But the, the variance that was mentioned before, um, the, the replacement we're proposing are just gonna be in these exact same spots. Right? If, if we were to follow the, uh, code without the variance, the signs would have to be in the middle of the parking lot. So it doesn't really make sense to, uh, to not request a variance. So, yeah, these are just more maps of, of where the locations would be for the signs. Um, there's two driveways, so they'd be on the inside of each driveway, kind of angled at a way that's facing the road, you know? If you go to the next slide. Just more visuals on, on where they will be and, and how visible they'll be. So if we look at the design itself, we try to make a design that's, that's a balance of, of, you know, we want it to, to look modern and new, but we don't want to stray away too much to what the building looks like, if that makes sense. You know, we want to keep it kind of similar, but have that perfect balance of modern and new. But also something that can fit in the spot that we're proposing. So like I said before, just the letters are gonna light up, um, it's just a simple design. We actually drew inspiration from this, from other apartment buildings in the area, like we saw some apartment buildings in Shaker Heights that had the same kind of design, we just altered it a bit. And th- these buildings were like the same kind of, of, uh, of buildings as ours, they're older buildings that were taken over, renovated and, and put new signage in, and so we kind of, we used, uh, you know, other signs in the area as inspiration, but we thought this was the perfect blend. You're probably gonna ask why the address isn't on the sign. So originally we thought to put it on the side, but the way the signs are kind of angled towards the road and everything, it wouldn't be visible, it wouldn't really make sense. And then we originally thought, okay, well, let's try to put it on the front. So we did that and we just thought that, um, you know, with the address on the front, it's just too much on the sign. It's too cluttered, it's not as easy to read. So we decided to just take it off altogether. And I do, um, like ninety-nine percent sure the address is on the building itself, because we do have Shorewood over the main entrance and then the address with it. So that kind of makes up for that and we talked to the, the design review committee about that. Yeah, it's up there. So the picture with the Shorewood on it, we actually did fix that R, that's sort of an older picture, but that's all fixed. Yeah, it's back up there. But it does have the address on it if you look, uh, closely. And the designer view committee was, uh, um, they're fine with that. But I mean, this is our design if we want to move on to, yeah, the renderings. So another thing we decided to do is we don't want like an empty flowerbed. We decided, um, since one of our, because this is not just a project for Shorewood, this is a project for a lot of our buildings. We want to put this exact same sign and design, just with different names on them for all of our buildings, if that makes sense. One of our buildings requires us to plant evergreen bushes around our sign. So we thought, well, why don't we just do this for every sign we put in? Because it looks nice, it's simple, it's easy to maintain. And it's just, you know, it's just what we decided to do. So in the landscaping plan, we have these bushes and one of the, um, I guess you could say, conditions of the, the design review committee was that these bushes be behind the sign, because the back of the sign is empty. So they wanted them behind the sign, so people aren't just staring at like a empty sign, you know, when they're in the parking lot. So we took that and, uh, and put it into our, our plan. Yeah, we can go through the renderings and look.
I think we're okay, I think we've got enough, this is the most comprehensive type presentation I've seen in a while.
Yeah.
Which is great, I think we're good.
The ending just, uh, these are just the blueprints, installation instructions and then that's it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. So, um, Shannon, anything else you want to say at the end of the presentation?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, I mean, the code requires the twenty-foot setback from the right of way. And so if you go back to the, the slide, you will see the variance that's required. Um, and if you choose to grant it, that would be what would, you would put in the motion.
Okay, so wait, we'll conclude that. Uh, commission members? On motion?
So I will move to approve granting the fourteen and seventy, seventeen, seventeen, foot variances from the right of way for the signage at one five five below Lake Shore.
A motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, um, we're gonna call the roll before, I'd like to say thank you. I mean, I do think the renovation of the units are quite nice. I love the, um, the fact that this does provide a kind of range of affordability and it's well maintained and you're investing in it. And you don't have to do that. And so, um, I actually really appreciate that and it's just in a really great enhancement for, um, good housing options for residents which people really want, so thank you for the investment. Appreciate it. Uh, call the roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Slife?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you, thank you, and thanks for the great signage presentation.
Thank you.
Um, the next item is, um, actually, uh, one four seven three four Lorraine Avenue demolition. This is in Camps Corner, uh, this is for final approval and it was recommended with three conditions. And so, um, if you can address those, um, are you gonna present this or someone online? I know you're, you're gonna tell us, says Murad Herbawi? Yeah, I'm like, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
You wanna go first or do you want him to present first?
I'll let Murad go through.
Okay, Murad, you wanna go first?
Yes, we have a request for this demolition for this vacant building. We did some, uh, quote for, uh, renovation. We came to the footings, we started from down up, the footing was terrible. Uh, made the walls bowing and cracking, falling apart. And, um, if you can go to the second pictures, maybe we can find those walls pictures. Um, these are the cost of the renovation, um, three hundred and up. You're talking about no electricity, no plumbing, no subfloorings, no insulations, no roof. No HVAC, nothing is in this building. So this is the left picture of the bottom one, how the walls start falling apart because the bad footings and the foundation is terrible. There's no subflooring inside, um, all the mechanical is gone, there's nothing inside. People keep coming, just breaking in and stealing some stuff from it, even, um, the roof from the snow. Keep leaking inside, as you see, there's only sand, there is no concrete floor. And cracks from this side as well, the trees are growing, um, terrible condition for this building. This is the back, uh, this is, this is the right pictures of how the roof is collapsing and goes straight to the crawl space, has destroyed everything, there is no basement. It's a crawl space slash basement, but it's terrible from the snow and, uh, the rain that happened for the last ten years. Uh, if we can move forward to the next picture. Yes, and this is the location from this corner. Foundation, parking lot, it's asphalt, it will be removed, the footings is actually around, um, four feet by two, it will be excavated and removed completely from under the ground, parking lot will be removed. Uh, organic dirt, seed and straw, law will be maintained as, uh, to be sold.
So just to repeat that, you, when you, you're demolishing the building, you're taking out all the pavement and the entire site will be seeded and graded?
Everything, yes ma'am, everything, yeah.
That's when this is in your board?
Yeah, this has been, um, been good with this demolition for a while. I think there was a, um, kind of a hope among, uh, Far West Design that there was a more definitive post demolition development plan. I've actually met with Murad out on the site and we've had some kind of, um, kind of brainstorming ideas about, you know, there's, there's the shopping plaza across the street with an RV and, uh, there's a demand for like townhomes and could we, there's a lot of opportunity on the site. I think that, uh, it's, I'm of the opinion that a, a greenfield development site will attract development more than what's currently here. There's also been a lot of challenges, uh, with illegal dumping, uh, behind the building. So I say, which the residents on adjacent streets have, uh, called my office about repeatedly. So I, I just think removing this kind of blight from this little section of Lorraine is overall beneficial and I'm supportive of it.
Morning, yes, this is Nate Law with Cleveland City Planning. There was a lot of discussion at Designer View about, um, demolition by neglect, unfortunately. But in the specific case, um, they were comfortable moving it forward with the conditions that the site is essentially gonna look like a green, you know, green space. The staff is also very supportive of the demolition. Um, I walked the site with Joe Dill from the Camps Development Corporation a couple of months ago. I can confirm it's in really bad shape, so we are very supportive of the demolition. And Joe might be online, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Um, I actually agree with you on this one, like the, um, the greenfield, this is an extraordinary developable site.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's like within walking distance of the rapid, like there are a lot of things going for it and I, yeah, and, and it's hard to, it's hard to visualize the next thing when you're looking at this, right?
And also for the investor to sort of take on, um, the, without knowing that the demolition. So I agree that this one will, I, I think it's gonna drive a quicker development, so, so thank you.
So, I need approval of the demolition at one four seven three four Lorraine, uh, with, uh, accepting the recommendations from Far West Design Review.
Second. A motion and a second, um, we'll call the roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Slife?
Yes.
Motion carries, I also think, uh, now it's done, that the, um, because it's so close to the rapid and because it'll be, that you really can now drive a higher density in this.
Yeah.
It will, like, it will encourage someone to do something intervention.
Right.
As opposed to if you were trying to fix that building, it really is a great site, so you'll be helping plan for that, I think, yes. Uh, next item is two zero two five dash zero nine, this is Rocky River Drive Plaza. Um, this is here for schematic approval and you can see some conditions from the local. Is JP on from Larson?
He's online. JP, you're muted if you're trying to talk?
You can see on the sheet that it was recommended for schematic approval, it had a few additional items for, uh, to consider before it comes back for final in terms of material, the concrete pad, bike racks, um, and the parapet, so we'll hear about that. JP, are you on? Want me to keep going and see if he can figure it out? We'll go to the next one. JP? Um, yeah, one, oh, two more, so why don't we go forward and then see if he can figure out the technical difficulty, so don't leave Nate.
Is there a dial-in number maybe if he's having something?
Yeah, so try it, um, we'll go on to the next one, which is, um, the youthhood corridor, this is two zero two four dash zero two five. The number on the agenda is wrong, so, um, this is circle square. This is here, um, for the north portion. And, um, so I think, uh, is Steve Rubin and Nolan on?
Yeah, they're in a hall.
Oh, they're hanging out in the hallway. Um, you can see on the agenda that this received schematic approval with a number of conditions, both from staff and design review. Things to consider, um, as they go from schematic to final approval, hello? Do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? And you can come here and, um, we'll turn on your mics, just press the green button so they can hear online. We know you're here for schematic approval. And, um, you probably saw a list of questions or things to consider for, before you come back for final. So if you want to address those, um, and we will put them on, your slides are up there in a second, so, you're welcome.
Okay, thanks. Um, is there a clicker that we get to?
They will do, just say next slide, are you gonna give it to them? Just green. We can hear you, but online, you are now being live streamed, just so you know, on YouTube, uh, it is live streamed.
And my Miranda is there?
And, uh, you are now, uh, you will tell the truth, but the, and the end of the day, um, to hear you online, thank you. Believe it, thousands of people watch the live stream, so, it's really popular.
Uh, did you wanna start off or?
Yeah, um, uh, as, as you mentioned, um, this is the beginning of our next phase of the Circle Square project, which I think most everybody here is familiar with on some level. Um, and um, Nolan Sit um, is the architect who is designing this building. This is the building uh, on the north portion of the East Stokes block, um, directly across from the Artisan. Um, our plan for the east for, for phase two is this building and to complete the uh, master plan for the rest of the main block, which is where the Artisan is that goes all the way to Reserve Court. That piece is a little bit behind this. This one, we're hoping to start as early as the first quarter of next year. It may be delayed, you know, it all depends on uh, the world and financing and material costs, but we wanted to start the process and continue the progress we've been making, obviously. So um, uh, I, I will just say very briefly that Nolan and I presented to Euclid Corridor yesterday. Um, uh, this is a redesign of a building that was brought to you that was over budget. So this building as it sits is now uh, in budget. Um, and Nolan will take you through the design and what's changed. Um, we think, you know, I will just say to you that um, we had a very, we were the only item on the agenda yesterday. We had a very robust conversation and actually the, the ten comments that you see, we think are, are very uh, good comments and, and we do plan on going back and incorporating what we can and, and also showing some of the things that they're asking us to show. What we have here today really is just the building. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nolan and let him walk through.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Steve. Yeah, we were actually here last year. Uh, we got through schematic design, uh, but we had to stop because we were over budget. Um,
Bless you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Uh, since then though, uh, we've simplified the tower, uh, we flattened the garage out. Um, we think that helps from a massing point of view. It also helps on the financing side and performa. Uh, and then the last thing is we changed the program a little bit, uh, so that it just works better for what our needs are. Um, so uh, three things that we wanted to cover today. Uh, first, we just wanted to refresh your memory on the project, where it's located, what we presented to you last year. Uh, and then the second thing is just give you the updates on where we are with design. And then third is just really hear your feedback and listen to you and we could look at it uh, and come back in a couple of months for a final design. Um, all of the stuff you guys probably know already, uh, but this is the master plan. Uh, it's bounded by Chester, Euclid, uh, and the museum campus to the right. Uh, it's three blocks. There's the main block north, main block south, uh, and East Stokes block. So we're in East Stokes uh, in that upper right-hand corner. Uh, this is an axonometric of it. Uh, so the rendering is a little out of date, uh, but East Stokes is more or less, that's the right massing and the right scale and the right orientation. So uh, we're right up against the park. Uh, the tower is oriented in the east-west direction and it just comes down to the ground. Last year, we presented a massing uh, that looks very similar to what you see on the screen here. Uh, there's really three components. Uh, there is the tower component that sort of stair steps into the sky. Uh, there's the podium element uh, that slips out and fronts Chester. And then there is the parking garage on the other side. Uh, this is a rendering uh, taken from the lagoon uh, and you can kind of see those stair steps as they climb up into the sky. Uh, the podium that pushes out uh, about seven levels. Uh, and then you can kind of see the garage just to the left of it, if you kind of squint and look through the trees. Um, when we looked at the design, what really resonated with us though was the top of the building. Um, we thought it was important to kind of salvage this as we thought about the redesign and how to simplify it. Uh, having this three steps um, into the sky, we thought it was a unique element. It created a crown and it differentiated itself uh, from a lot of the buildings that you see go up now. Uh, looking at the master plan at the ground level, uh, just thirty thousand feet up in the air, uh, one of the main goals was to keep Stokes as a retail street. So uh, having retail on both ends of the street, we thought was really important. Uh, and so in the redesign, you'll see that we've maintained that. Uh, and then this was just our old site plan. Uh, we changed it up on yet, but purple and red are the same. So that's retail. That's about seventeen thousand square feet. Um, we had an office component uh, last year and that's in blue. That was off of Chester. Residential is yellow and then the gray and dark gray below that is loading dock, mechanical. And then we had a couple parking entrances off of MLK uh, and Reserve Court. And so the next couple of slides, we'd like to take you through uh, what our proposed changes are and um, where we are with the design. Uh, so we thought this was a good way to start it. Uh, it's a side-by-side comparison on the left uh, is what was approved last year. Uh, and on the right is what we're proposing today. So uh, we got rid of the podium uh, and pushed the tower to the north so that it butts up against Chester. Uh, and then we also removed Reserve Court and built over it. So that allowed our seven-story parking garage to shrink down to four stories and we ended up picking up fifty more spaces. Um,
It also gives us, just if I can interrupt, it also gives, by eliminating that uh, Reserve Court going all the way through, it gives us the opportunity to build more retail, which we think is very important. We had originally uh, hoped to achieve about a hundred thousand square feet, but with all of the interior first floor, things that we need to build for the buildings to work, the retail was down in the sixty thousand square feet. So we're trying to maximize the retail run. Um, so that's one of the reasons why we're building over Reserve Court, um, which we think is very, very important. But I wanna make sure you're aware of it, so.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. And uh, we, we also were able to increase the number of residential units. So we're getting about twenty more units uh, in this building uh, versus the last. Uh, and then of course, we, we added some townhomes off of MLK. Civically, we just think it's a good idea to activate that end of the site. It was unfortunate um, in the last iteration uh, that it was just ended up being mechanical. So. And one other thing that we just wanted to remind you about is that uh, we, we do see this uh, as a phased development. Um, so phase one is the site that we're working on. Uh, and then phase two is the parcel to the south. Uh, we're trying to keep it as open-ended and flexible as possible. So you know, right now we're showing an office building on that corner. Uh, and ideally that would be great. In today's world, it's hard to know when that might come back. Uh, but eventually the parking podium will kind of continue through and then there, there will be a tower above it. Uh, so what you're seeing right now is the updated uh, rendering and image um, from the lagoon. Uh, so you can see those three slender tubes that kind of rise up into the air. We kept that stair step coming. Uh, we've got the dark blue accent that breaks up those masses and you get a thinner proportion. Uh, we've got two balconies um, on the front of the building that face MLK. Uh, and then we've got three larger balconies uh, at the top floor uh, for those penthouse units. And then just to kind of accentuate that top, uh, we slightly indented um, those forms uh, so catch light and uh, cast shadow a little bit differently and added some vertical uh, glass pieces that are a little bit brighter. And the hope is that it'll kind of shimmer as you see it from afar. Um, looking in the lower left-hand corner, past the trees, you'll see a little bit of the townhomes over there. Uh, just at the corner is the residential lobby and then as you kind of walk to the right is more retail. Uh, this is a close-up of the top. Um, you can see we've, we've sort of toned it down from what it was originally. Um, so we've got three kind of equal forms that stair step up. It's the dark blue glass that separates them and it's a very subtle move, but I think effective where instead of keeping everything flush, it's slightly depressed in and it creates just a nice little home to, to put that larger balcony in. Um, this is a view and our vision for the amenity space at the top of the building. So we are standing at the east end uh, of the building. Uh, so we've got a long linear pool that kind of butts up against the ends. Uh, chase lounge shares uh, that surround it on three ends. Um, that stadium seating, we call it the mondo steps in the center uh, is what ties uh, this first amenity level to the second amenity level. Um, we think that's a really cool feature. Um, up above is dedicated to fitness. Uh, so there'd be a spa and a cold plunge, uh, whereas that first level is more about social and, and lounge space.
I could just um, jump in. This is a formula that has been used in some of the developments we've been doing in um, the west, um, a few buildings. And we think, we love the amenity space at the Artisan, which I think many of you have seen. We think this is uh, has been a massive improvement to step the amenity space. So we, we, we really would like to do that because we think it is ju, it is really well received.
Especially while you're here, although you won't, uh, is the, um, is the community stair, if you will, the, the, is it oriented towards the um, towards the lagoon? Like if I was sitting on it, would I have direct, like, so basically from an orientation point of view, I would literally be looking at the art museum if I'm sitting on the stairs?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Okay. Cause that would be amazing, right?
Yeah.
It'll be up there and be on the stairs. It'd be like this incredible vista to Wade Oval and the art museum. So that's the orientation of it.
Yes, correct. Yeah.
That's great.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it just happened to line up really, really well. Um, these are the plans of the amenity levels. Uh, so uh, the first one is level twenty-three, the second one is level twenty-four. Uh, to help orient you, you could see the pool on the right hand side. All of the pale brown is exterior and then all of the tan and beige is interior. So that first level, uh, it's hard to read, but it's mostly social spaces. So your club room, your game room, co-working lounge, uh, and then the space above is dedicated to fitness. So your yoga, exercise equipment. Um, there's a spill-out space where you can pull your bikes outside and cycle, uh, and then a spa and cold plunge. And then the thing that really ties it together is that um, that stadium seating or those, those mondo steps. Um, going back uh, to the plans and section of the building, uh, you can see the tower section on the left, um, the podium plan on the right. The parking is pretty straightforward. It's a single helix uh, two-way circulation uh, in ninety degrees. Um, and you can see uh, it just kind of butts into the back end of the core. So uh, as it comes down Chester, you'll have active uses uh, along that facade and you'll have active uses uh, at the corners, both on Stokes and MLK. Uh, one other change um, that we're proposing is increasing the number of twos and threes. Uh, so we added a couple of tiers and modified some uh, just so that we could handle some larger units. Um, the development team is, they, they think that there's an opportunity to have more families um, and, and bigger groups live in this building. Uh, looking at the updated master plan now uh, at the ground level, you can see uh, the red that continues down on our side uh, that mirrors uh, main block north. Uh, so we think that Stokes will kind of be realized as a retail street. Uh, in the upper right-hand corner, we kept the residential lobby. Uh, and then that orange, which is kind of hard to see, uh, but that's the townhomes over there. Uh, zooming in, this is a little bit easier to see. Um, the purple is the retail. Uh, so that's a little over seventeen thousand square feet of retail. Uh, just below that uh, is the parking entrance into the main garage. Uh, and then that orange rectangle uh, is the retail parking elevator. So if you're a patron for one of the, the retailers, you would park in the garage or park on the streets uh, and then come down that elevator uh, and go to one of those spaces. Uh, on the other side of MLK, uh, you'll see a couple orange rectangles. Those are all the townhomes. Um, so it's great that we can use that to screen the garage and activate the street. Um, we have a separate parking entrance for them, uh, so that is just exclusive. And there's about ten spaces for I think five townhomes. Uh, just in the north of that is mechanical. Uh, we've got a loading berth, uh, and then the yellow is residential. That, that hasn't changed uh, through any of the iterations. Uh, there's two laybys, uh, so one on Chester. Uh, the other one is on MLK. The one for Chester is for retail and um, residential prospective tenants. Uh, and then the one on MLK uh, is just to get them off of MLK. So it's a little bit easier of a turn um, for the parking on the townhomes, but also on the loading dock. Uh, as far as landscape and streetscape plan, um, you know, we're really happy with the way the Artisan turned out. Uh, and we would wanna keep um, you know, the same style of furniture, the same style of planters and pavement patterns and just extend it through so that this part of Stokes does feel like one uh, unified street. Um,
I'm, I'm gonna jump into it for just a second, Nolan. Um, what you're seeing, what you haven't seen before, and I do wanna point out to you, is we were approached by UCI and um, uh, members of the city, I think it's the TOD group, if I'm, I don't, I don't wanna wrongly identify them. And they asked us if we would consider a bike lane. Um, instead of ending at the old university circle, extending it through to Chester. Um, we had spent a, a significant amount of money and you've seen, you know, the plans for um, uh, how we wanna dress up um, both sides of Stokes between Chester and Euclid with a lot of hardscape and landscape, twenty-foot sidewalks. So uh, in working with the city, and this is not finalized, but I, I, I think everyone is on board with this plan is um, rather than have to throw all those plans out, what we have proposed and I believe has been well received is moving the bike lane up so that it is even with the sidewalk. And that will give us some room to then be able between the bike lane, which would be two ways um, to maintain our plan, still have twenty-foot sidewalks, um, still have the layby. It would probably cause the street to go to um, two lanes, one in each direction, which the city was, they, they were fine with. They thought that that wasn't a problem. Traffic people so far have not objected, but just so that you're up to speed on, you know, what's going on and, and what is in process. And this has not been finalized, but we wanted to show it to you as part of this. So the plan would be to incorporate that, but not change the plans that you've previously seen, assuming we, we get to the finish line.
Um, and then the, the upper two images uh, were early images uh, done at the master plan level. Uh, if you take the image on the upper left, uh, East Stokes is the building on the left. Uh, and then all we did was we wanted to show you kind of where we are today with that street frontage. So it breaks down into two masses. Uh, you've got the, the retail fronts with the tower above. Um, and there's a little bit of an overhang there and you get some exposed columns, which kind of breaks down the scale of that corner. Uh, and then past that, uh, you can kind of see the garage rising above that tree. Uh, and you've got the storefront that continues over there. Um, moving on to the elevations over here uh, at the ground level, uh, this is a view standing on the other side of Chester. So uh, the residential entry is on the left-hand side of the project and then the retail is on the right. Um, overall, we thought it was important to bring the glass down all the way to level one. Uh, and then just have the columns exposed. Uh, we were gonna set in the storefront glass just a little bit, uh, have a louver band and make it feel like the whole building was floating at that first level. Um, up above it, uh, we're treating the glass, uh, we're treating the exterior with two different types of glass. So one is that silvery blue glass and the one is more of a slate blue. Uh, and all we're trying to do is visually break up the mass uh, to give it a sense of scale for people walking around. Um, and we were inspired by what we were doing at the top of the building and thought it made sense to bring that. And we were inspired by what we were doing at the top of the building and thought it made sense to bring that stair step down here, too. We continued that expression as it wraps the corner over here and kind of dives into the parking garage. Other subtle details that we're looking at is the slab edge cover on the silvery blue glass. We think it would be better if it was kind of a white creamy milk glass versus the, the dark glass that wants to be a little bit more slates and gray and more monotone. Moving to the other side of the development on MLK, you can see the tower on the right with the two balconies coming down. And on the left, you're seeing the townhomes there for the first time. We think it does a pretty good job of screening the garage behind it. There is a mechanical area that we kind of fenced off and the loading berth that you see there. But for the most part, we think there's a pretty good separation between the townhomes and the tower and it feels very active to us. This is something that we've been discussing, is ongoing, but we wanted to be transparent with all of you. And everyone is very excited about the townhomes. But there's a good possibility that it'll be a for-sale product. And so what we've been told, if it's a for-sale product, the financing of it may come in a different form. And so because of that, and then if you have to sell townhomes, it might happen a little bit later than when the project, when the tower is complete. But the idea is that once the tower is complete, that we would just continue with the townhomes. I mean, that would be the most cost-effective way to do the construction of it. Moving to the material party, we think it's pretty clear. Some of this we had presented to you last year, so I'll try to go through it a little bit more concisely. But the tower itself, we think of it as, as, as two different glass types. So one is the silvery blue, the other is the dark blue. And then the, the townhomes is, is also two colors. One's a taupe and then the other one's a little bit richer kind of fiber cement. This is a rendering of it, what we, it might look like in the daytime. So we also sprinkled some images of glass examples, both on the silvery blue glass and the dark blue glass, as well as the fiber cement for the townhomes. Looking at the silvery blue glass first, we're proposing a VRE one fifty-four. The visible light transmittance is forty-three percent. The exterior reflectance is thirty-four percent. The image on the left, Paragon Chicago, is a project we recently completed and uses the same glass type. And what we like about it is that it's, it's very dynamic. So during the day, it could be sometimes mirror-like and you'll get reflections of the clouds in the sky. And even on angle pieces, you know, you'll get kind of a shimmering of lights. And then other times of the day, when the sun is directly on the glass, it'll be very transparent and you'll start to see the shadows of the mullions and it'll appear darker in some angles. And then, of course, at sunset or sunrise, you'll get the beautiful reflections of the sky and the orange and the purples. The dark blue glass, we think is not dynamic. The exterior reflectance is around seven percent. And that's intentional because we want it to be consistent throughout the day from, from morning to night. That allows the sparkly silver blue glass to really shine and keep those volumes intact. The townhomes themselves, we picked a really simple palette. We started with a taupe color. That's that lighter gray brown color. We think that connects to the concrete really well, which you'll see on the tower columns that come at the ground floor. And then we paired that up with a more of a mixed palette of fiber cement colors that are brown, dark brown and lighter brown. And so it's a little, it's more or less the inverse of the tower where the, the dark brown, the mixed palette becomes kind of the rich element and provides that nice scale as you walk across the street. Whereas the light brown is the, is the background and the base that holds it all together.
You went through the overhang, that one slide.
Yeah.
We're good, actually, just some time to discuss it, unless it's critical.
Well, there's, there is one thing you should note. There, there is, there are a couple of places where we hang over. Right away on the second floor, we'll need an encroachment easement. And there is, on the, the highest level, our zoning is, has a limit of two fifty. That, that is actually two fifty-two. But the top, if, what we're doing is we're enclosing the mechanical equipment, which is normally excluded. So if, we think it's better to put it under roofren rather than just leave it sticking out. But if, if you exclude that, it's, it's under the two fifty. And I just want to make, I don't want you to feel like we skipped over something important. That's it.
All right, commission members, thoughts or comments? I have a few questions, but they're questions, just things I'm curious about. You can go ahead first.
First of all, as always, chao, well done. I mean, I walk by the site every morning when I walk, so I'm, I'm about ten minutes, fifteen minutes from here. So I'm getting really excited, so hopefully you pull this off. As we listen, there's a comment here about glass. You all have demonstrated your command of visual aesthetics and performance of glass. I have, I, I have no doubt you'll master that, so I don't have an issue with, with appearance because you've done, you've demonstrated it. The, I have one, and thank you for being transparent, by the way, about what we might see, you know, along the development. Lastly, this is a, this is a constructive criticism. As I walk by, the concrete, the precast concrete benches that you have, there's a problem. And the problem is the LED lights that, that were placed are being pulled away because I think you should really consider how you maybe create sort of a reveal to set that housing in and, and protect the wiring, because what's happening during maintenance, sweeping, things like that, they're being pulled away from the underside of the benches. So.
We, we are aware.
I'm sure you're aware of that.
We actually walked it a week ago. Trying to figure out, it was actually put in by Perk under the city's contract.
Yeah.
And we're trying to figure out how to fix it right now. We have the electrician out, because you're right, it is getting pulled out. And also, it's not working the way it's supposed to and has to be fixed.
Kind of intuitive for me to walk by something like that. I almost want to go back, get my toolbox, get on my hands and knees and like jerry-rig some work, but anyway.
I was going to say, he's invited if he wants to do it.
Because everything else is executed so well. So anyway, hopefully you take that positively. I mean, obviously, some maintenance is.
We already are aware of it and trying to figure out the best way to fix it.
That's all I have, thank you.
I have some questions and just curiosities and, but first I'll start with my overarching comment. I actually think that this kind of revision, the, I know you're doing it also for, to, you make the pro formas kind of work. I think, but I actually think it's quite nice. I think that the, this revision for me actually, because of the townhomes and I absolutely want them to stay and I, into the design. And I know that it's hard to finance for-sale product, but they are absolutely critical, in my opinion, because the kind of texture it's going to add to this project. But I do think the ground floor actually has now a kind of a, it feels really more pedestrian-oriented than even the first iteration for me. My questions, though, are between first, between the Artisan and the library lots, are they, library lots are? What is the occupancy? Is it fully occupied now versus a little bit?
The Artisan is fully, is, when I say fully occupied, stabilized for us is at ninety-five percent. Right now, the Artisan is at ninety-three percent. We're kind of in that
That's great.
Zone where we're, you know, as the students, as the grad students and the med students come in, we'll, we'll get, I'm sure we'll get back to ninety-five. Library, and, and I should say very quickly, because I know time's important. All of these are, are slightly different. And the reason for that is we want to make sure that we are addressing need for everybody. So library and library lofts are all studios and one bedrooms, as you probably remember. The Artisan averages, I think it's about plus or minus eight hundred square feet. These units, as Nolan alluded to, will be larger so that, you know, we would hope that we would attract more empty nesters and, and families because we will have enough space in these units for them to, you know, comfortably live in this next building. So, you know, we, we pay a lot of attention to that and, and neighborhood creating. This has been branded now as Circle Square Neighborhood because we wanted to, we really want to be inclusive and we want it to be a neighborhood that reaches out to everybody. The last piece to answer your question is library lofts. Library lofts is seventy-eight percent leased as of today, or yesterday, whatever the day we hit it, which for us is phenomenal because although we had a temporary permit end of August, beginning of September for the first couple of floors, the site was under construction by the library. And so it was kind of hard. I think we, we ended up with seven, eight leases for people who are willing to walk through a construction zone under scaffolding to get to their apartment. We got our final in December and between December and now, we've essentially leased, you know, all of these units. So we're pleased with the progress. Whether we'll hit nine, you know, at the nineties this year or whether we'll have to go into next year remains to be seen because we do have a lot of health, healthcare workers that are in library lofts. It's not just medical students, but we also have, you know, a number of people who just work at the clinic who are researchers, who are RNs. And so we'll continue to lease until we, we get it leased up. But so far, the trajectory is much quicker actually than the Artisan was.
That's great. And I love the idea that the, there's like, you have a range of products, range of target markets. This one will be different. It, it makes a lot of sense. My next comment is just totally tiny. If they can go back to the rendering, the rendering, renderings. And, and they were two, they were, one is, it'll come back, keep going back, to one where it shows like the retail. You could stop there. So it's, it's just something to think about. Like, I love actually the way this will be with the vision glass on the ground floor. Here you have like the signage underneath, or they overhang.
Yeah.
And I wonder if, as it's a tiny detail, as you think about actually attaching it and hanging it, like the idea that as you start to really think about that retail street, which is Stokes, which I love, if it's possible, to, to, to really have there, is to actually make it feel a little more of a messy and vibrant, which is hard to do. So since the Artisan doesn't quite have retail yet, what are you envisioning as the kind of retail? Breaking this up into multiple small retail, one large thing on both sides of the street?
No, the, the Artisan side of the street, the retail depths are up to a hundred and five square feet. And our expectation is that will be, I don't want to say anchor tenants, but the larger tenants will be on that side of the street. This side of the street, the East Stokes side, the retail spaces, the depths are seventy feet. So this is where you'll have, you know, the bank branch, the dry cleaner, the, you know, the sub shop, that kind of stuff. So you'll have the smaller shops on this side of the street and probably, I would say, two or three, the larger tenants on the other side of the street.
And you said that you're looking more at the kind of utility type retail that for amenities.
Yeah, we've already, we've always looked for, at this as not as an entertainment district. It is, this is, we want people to walk out, have food choices and also be able to do their day, day errands.
Yep.
So that, that's what we're doing. Can I just, very quickly, one of the things that, you know, philosophically, what we believe in is that the storefront and signage is art. And it's, and it's, you know, it's hard to really show what it's going to look like. But it does not, the, these storefronts do not have to be uniform. And in fact, we'll, we'll encourage some unique designs and signage because when you're walking along the street, you don't really see the buildings. You see the streetscape and we want the streetscape with all of the investment that's being made as a gathering space. We want it to also be artistic and, and draw people in. So, you know, more to come with that as we start to lease space. But philosophically, that's what we like to try to achieve.
Okay, and then my last one is just too small, but to think about if there's anything you can do, it's sort of like hide the garage door to the service or don't hide it or look at translucent or think about it, like, just like think about it a little bit more. I can go either way, which is like, if it's just like a brown garage door and you try to put it in the background, it's fine. But it is an unfortunate location, but it has to be there, so.
The garage door on Artisan is well done.
It, it is.
In my opinion.
If you go back, the location of this one is, is like on this kind of park side, unfortunate, like. But it has to be there, I have no problem with it.
Yeah.
I just don't have the answer. I just wonder, is like, is it to make it as least apparent as possible? So maybe it's not brown, it's actually the glass color, it's more of a kind of background. Or is it, you actually address it in some other way that it's vibrant? I, I don't know, but the brown to me probably isn't the answer. And I know it's just a rendering, so, but up to you. Just wanted to raise it.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
It has to be there. And, and then lastly, I'll tell you that I do think probably in Cleveland, there will not be many other places with that kind of amenity on the roof. It's pretty cool. Will the general public be able to get up there? Like, yeah, could, could I go use the spa? Is there a way by which I could buy a pass?
Yes.
Rooftop, no, 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 but I mean, like rooftop amenities like are, like, so, you know, I was just in Madrid and you could, you could pay to get up and hang out and places and it was awesome, so.
No, but there, there is more to come. And if you, if you're patient with us, we'll, we'll address, we, we will in the future, hopefully, be able to address that concern.
Right. Because like, it's the one thing about like the Metropolitan downtown, the Briar Tower, which is my fave, is I love to go up there. It's like a vantage point of Cleveland that is special and you can, you're, you're allowed to go up there. It's pretty cool and it causes like a, so anyway, that's my last.
We, we have ideas to, that we're, that hopefully we will be able to share with you in the future.
Great, that one, yes, I hope that does not end up in the paper. I don't mind for myself, I'm just saying it's for the general public to be able to go up there.
I mean, I'll get out there for the public. You need a soul house in Cleveland. But anyhow, I did just have a quick question on the amenity level. It's hard to tell and I know this is a schematic, excuse me, rendering. What portion of the levels will have, I guess, what I'm trying to understand is like, what can only be used in warm time or warm climates of the year, times of the year versus like what's enclosed that would be accessible to the tenants, you know, during our more cold months of the year?
There's only a couple.
Okay. I figured this much.
A couple of cold months.
I mean, people do jump.
I'm still getting snow in April, so.
It's primarily the pool is the only thing.
Okay.
So you would have to drain the pool before the winter and then just, you know, turn it off, the water, so it doesn't freeze. But everything else, you could keep running.
Okay. Thank you.
I wouldn't recommend the cold plunge.
Yeah, it wakes you up.
I'm good.
So, and when do you think we'll see you back?
We are hoping to come back sometime in October.
Okay, the final, okay, thank you. Commission men, motion?
Yeah, I, I move to approve schematic design as presented for Circle Square with the caveat that they address design review and city planning staff comments in the future.
Second motion, a second. I just want to say thank you for both the great presentation, the transparency, the evolution, I'll call it. And it's just been extraordinary to see. I think the, as I saw that for me, the axonometric of, of these, I'll call them two blocks, four, five buildings. It really struck me, this idea that if this project were one building at a time, we wouldn't have this transformation. So your vision to kind of look at it in this big way is transformative. And so thank you for that.
It's, it's a labor of love.
Yes, it is. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. See you soon. Do you want us to go back or go forward? We got two more.
I think I got JP logged in through the phone.
Thank you. So we're going to go back to page nine, which is Rocky River Drive Plaza, two zero two five dash zero nine. This is four six two two. Um, is JP on? One more time, JP from Larson Architects? JP, we are, we welcome you in person. Would like to come next time in person.
I do know that he was out of town this weekend, traveling, so.
Okay. Um, all right, well, we're going to keep going because we just have one other one, and then we'll try one more time. So we're going to go to two zero two five dash zero two eight. This is ten sixty Bolivar. This is signage. Is Vince here from Blink Signs? Vince? And Shannon, are you going to talk about this one too?
Uh, good morning, yes.
Uh, well, hold on, because we might not be able to hear it. Is, uh, but I just wanted to check, is Vince here from Blink Signs?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do, I am.
Okay, uh, Shannon, you want to go first?
Uh, yeah, good morning, Madam Chair, Shannon Leonard, Chief Zoning Administrator. Uh, this is for the parking garage located at ten sixty Bolivar Road. Next slide. So the applicant is proposing two four square foot projecting signs for the parking garage. It's used for tenant parking and paid parking, uh, so they fall under uh chapter four fifty seven for signage requirements. That's for paid parking garages and lots and around the city. Next slide. Uh, so obviously, the current zoning here is semi-industry. Next slide. And again, so why the City Planning Commission, uh, you all have the ability, uh, with respect to any type of signage, uh, for paid parking. If there's any variance in it, you all have to approve it. The sign is attached to the wall of the building, is better suited for the design of such a building than conforming sign would be. The sign meets a higher standard of design quality that would result in minimal conformance to the standards of four fifty seven. Uh, it has been designed that is more appropriate to the context. And then the sign is part of a comprehensive signage system or a large scale complex of facilities. And in the case of any new sign, any deviation from the standards is up to you all. Next slide, please. Uh, so paid parking signage requires that the international parking symbol uh from four fifty seven to be displayed as a white uh P in place of a purple circle. Uh, and they are proposing two four square foot signs. The sign variance is for a brown letter P. Uh, it's Pantone seven thirty two on a brown circular background. Next slide, please. Again, so you're just essentially using design standards that have been adopted by this commission and council. As does this fit better than the purple circular sign with a white letter? Next slide. And that's all I have. And the applicant can talk about their choices.
Yeah, so what we're doing is we're doing a cabinet that's going to be, um, the P will be pushed through acrylic, so it will halo light. I think if you go down to the next page. One more page, please. So we're trying to keep the same color and aesthetics as the front tenant or the front um. Ten sixty sign. So kind of keeping that that brown and um beige kind of, yeah, exactly. Thank you. Now, I did receive an email from Dan that there may be some additional signage needed. I'll talk with the client about that. Uh, this is the entrance. This is just a vinyl um inside of the parking garage going into the building. These are the locations of the sign. One is on. Boulevard, the other one's on Erie Court, I believe it is. So you can see on the left hand bottom, that will be the illumination. These are just door vinyls. I believe they're going to have a small coffee shop in there, but that's TBD, so I'm not in our scope, so that'll be at a later date.
Um, thank you. Shannon, a quick question. Um, are, is staff recommending that they use the blue? Because I kind of like this color. I know it's not the standard, but is 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 that what you're recommending? Do you want to go ahead?
No, um, we're just here today because it's, uh, the code requires the international parking P very specifically in that style. So we're just here today to request a variance for a different aesthetic. And obviously, they have a whole brand package that they're trying to meet. And um, there are, because they're paid public parking, there are some rate requirements that need to be posted. And so that's the uh additional signage that we'll work through with uh the applicant. We just ask that we can do that and not come back here.
Because I like it. I do like also the vinyl applied. It's cool, so, um, all right, questions?
I'll move approval of uh this sign variance at ten sixty Bolivar for the different colored P. Okay.
Thank you.
And would you also add, just add to that before we get a second, that.
Sure.
You can go to staff to further detail.
Yeah, further details can go to staff. This aligns with their design. I personally think that the the letter is what people are looking for. They don't have a familiarity with the color, but that's, that's just me.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to try one last time for Rocky River Drive. So this is four six two two two, Rocky, Rocky River Drive. Is JP on?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Holy crap.
Do you, do you swear to, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I I do. I was swearing earlier, but uh.
Just so the commission knows, this is here for schematic approval. This uh, and there were four kind of uh comments from slash and conditions from local. We'll hear from Nate after, but um you can go first.
Sure, and and uh just as clarification, what what was presented to Far West Design Review. Was subsequently updated, and this reflects uh their last round of comments as well. As well as um, Madam Chairman, your comments as well about the storefront uh and how we were addressing that, so.
Okay, then are we here for final?
I don't, I don't know the direct answer to that. Um, there was some suggestion that if we're trying to move this quickly. If this is the purview of the commission to say so, and to go back to Far West next Wednesday. If if this feels like we're we're close enough and can review with staff, be happy to entertain that. If that, if that is the board's uh, the commission's purview, so.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll decide once we hear it.
Understood. So, um, again, just referencing the existing site location. Um, and the existing house that was approved for demo previously, uh, moving ahead. Uh, again, same context as was showed previously, no difference in this slide. Uh, again, mosque uh just to the north at this point. Proposed demo of the house, the driveway, uh, disconnecting the access point from Rocky River Drive. And then utilizing the drive off Fern Cliff, uh, where the existing mosque's uh funeral home uh to the same ownership is. Next. Again, uh, plan, uh, this includes some comments uh in plan from uh the Far West Design Review. Uh, which included kind of tweaking a location of the bike racks so that they were three feet on on all approaches, so that we easily do that. Saying new bike rack at this point. Uh, this did show landscaping uh to meet the requirements to separate from residential, both north and south. Let's see, uh, shadow box fencing along the perimeter as well. And uh, again, the same configuration of parking along the backside of the building. Uh, next, we had included in this one, uh, again, the same contact shots to show kind of where we were trying to blend in. To the context of the architecture. This includes several comments uh that came back through and some refinements to the layout itself. Uh, this now includes locations for the lighting, which uh was in response to the request for the photometric. Uh, there was a request to have us review the sightlines uh so that the screening um by the carpet was uh going to. Prohibited seeing some of the RTUs that are being proposed, which did force us to raise the proportion a little bit. We moved up about a foot, uh, one foot four uh to help better screen those, and it set our heights for structure. Uh, we're now showing um uh how the building is going to drains. We've got some scuppers on both north and south side. And then we did revisit um kind of some horizontal banding uh to the storefront system. And uh tying in durable materials that walk the uh whole base of the building at this point. But basically more in keeping with actually what's at the mosque building and the most recent addition to the north. With kind of breaking up the facade a little bit more, so that it may read a little bit more like a more formal storefront. And should they need or want, uh, as the tenancy is developed, uh, to address, um, you know, doors. All of the uh head heights of the moions would allow a door to be placed in either side if we wanted to split uh that access. Or added as an access uh to get out to the front patio or the the rear uh of the of the parking area, so. And then continuing on. Uh, we just included for reference kind of the same treatment for the uh small trash enclosure in the back that would service both buildings. And then uh, this is that site study. They had asked us to kind of look at, make sure that we couldn't, um, you know, apparently have a lot of visual access to the RTUs. Because we're setting two units kind of central uh along the kind of more or less east west spine of the building. We're a hundred and ten, a hundred and eleven feet, uh, which is functionally across the street almost, um, before you'd actually get to, you know, see the top of the units at this point, so. But obviously, anything close with that fifteen foot four, we're not going to do it. And uh, this was just a a piece that we added uh as a result of going to the Pet Bot. CFD had asked us to um look at access points for apparatus. So we did that. We diagrammed where uh fire hydrants were going to be, uh, access distances around the building to uh service in the case of emergency. Uh, the rear drive should still allow access for a squad as a one way through. But um, any larger apparatus probably wouldn't be able to get in because of the existing limitations of the drive width. We wouldn't meet Ohio Fire Code for a twenty foot lane uh along the back of it. But this was uh intended to document as a feedback from that Pet Bot review. And I think the last pieces then were just the uh photometric and then the uh lighting cut sheets uh that were accompanying it. Just down gaslight, uh, go kind of throw forward and back.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to give us an update?
Yes, uh, good morning, Beal, uh, City Planning Staff. They have met the comments from the schematic designer uh review approval last week. And so staff recommends approval, um, and we would give them the opportunity or ask the commission to give them the opportunity to. Have any future review happen just at the local level.
Before we, I just want to clarify that. So if we give final approval, um, you want just, if there are any changes to go to staff? Meaning, because if we give final approval, they don't have to go back to local.
Right.
And it's, I I I mean, I I don't see any need for that, but is there a need for that?
I think they addressed the questions that were mainly um asked at design review. So staff is comfortable giving final approval if you're comfortable.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I um move to approve item number nine under West Design Review as presented for final approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Motion carries. I mean, obviously, unless there's something that, that, you know, when they come for the sign up, they haven't done, then you can go back. But it seems like they have, you know, um, addressed everything, so, thank you. So we just have administrative approvals. Um, I, as going through them, have noticed that there are four of the ten that I need to abstain from. So I'm just going to abstain from them all, um, just so you know. Um, and I will point out, mine were the um Breathboat Riders, the Irish Town Band, and the Eastwood Beach. So, um, but I will just abstain from them all, so can we have a motion?
I move to approve the administrative approvals.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call the roll.
Uh, Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Curry?
Abstain.
And Slade?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, we have one item for um information only. This is um. For the downtown parking lots. Um, there was a handout, if you want to see, I think it's there.
Oh, gotcha.
Um, about an ordinance that we are not approving. This is for information only. But we will be responsible for applying it as we see parking lots kind of come in. So, um, I think that um Deanna is going to give us an update so that as we start to see these coming before us, we know how to apply. Three eight four nine dash one four. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Dan Schinkel, Principal Planner. I'm going to stand up so I can point to some things as we go through. We're talking about downtown surface parking lots today. And just wanted to cover like some of our big highlights here from an agenda perspective. We're first just going to analyze the code and really break down what it says and what it means. And really how that a project would move through the commission and BZA. Um, we'll look at some recent projects that have come through, um, some of the tax implications and what that means really for our greater city initiatives. And then um some historical overview about demolitions that have happened over time for surface lots. Um, some of the new development that we're seeing. And if we have time, we'll jump into um some other stadium districts, just because that's the area that we're seeing this type of uh, uh, these type of things play out the most. So the code is actually really simple. It's two pages, um, in that sense, um, short and sweet. But there are quite a few nuances to it um that I'll break down. Just to walk through this, this is chapter three forty nine, um, off-street parking and loading. Three forty nine point one four in particular is what we're looking at. So these are surface parking lots in designated downtown area districts. I'll walk through what those are in a moment here. But just to kick things off, the purpose of this code was really to preserve our urban architectural character. In the most intensively developed portions of downtown. So you think about where we have skyscrapers and sky rises, um, and lots of um heavy um development. We're trying to preserve those things and continue to grow in that way. It was also to reduce auto emissions and traffic congestion and doing all of this without discouraging new development. Um, and so for the councilman, as you came back in, really just preserving the urban or the architectural character of that area, the density. Moving down the list, so you have in front of you the code itself. We're just going to step down it as we go. So this is uh point one four B, um, applicability, as I mentioned, the designated districts. These are them. I'll just throw them on the screen here. Um, so there's seven districts, the core warehouse flats, lakefront. Erie View Gateway and CSU. Um, so it covers most of the CBD and some areas even outside of the CBD. Um, and it preserves the lakeside industrial zone um outside of those areas so that uh we're not impacting industry. We do have a definition of a surface lot here. Um, the off-street parking areas at street grade level. Not enclosed within a garage structure, and um the code does clarify the surface or the top level of a surf, of a um. Parking deck does not count as a surface lot. But this is where the code gets interesting. But this is where the code gets interesting. Flat out in point one four D expansion or establishment of new surface lots is prohibited. With the exception of coming to this body in very specific instances. So pretty much across the board, applicants don't really have much option. This type of thing is prohibited, but there are a few, and these are those four options where an applicant could come into the commission and do a surface lot downtown. But it's only in accordance with these provisions. So we have temporary parking lots, which you saw a good example that was the rock block that unfolded with us just a couple of weeks ago. Accessory parking, you could kind of think of like Sherwin-Williams in that way. Action areas and vacant lots. The nuance really of the code sits up here, mostly in one, a little bit in two. And three and four are very straightforward. So we'll spend a lot of time on one and less time with the others. So option one for a temporary lot. This is usually in a, in relation to the demolition of an existing building and a new development plan for that area. So say, you know, you've got a small two-story and you wanna build a Skyrise or something like that. You have to approve the new development project first. And you can do these all in the same meeting. The demolition can be approved, the new development can be approved. And you could even approve the temporary surface lot at that meeting. But the stipulation here is that the, if you want to develop new like that and you get all the approvals from this body, you are allowed to build a surface lot for one year. It's temporary. It's really to use, you know, if you're trying to build, do some demolition, have contractor parking, things like that, make it easy. It could also be used to generate additional like gap financing, things like that. So it's trying to be development focused in that way. So it allows for that one-year use as a temporary. And if you're unable to obtain all the permits within that year, you have to landscape that as green space or open space or another non-parking use that comes back to this body for approval. And so really the, the idea here is that we can't demolish a building and approve a parking lot unless we have a development plan with it. Those are the key components. If after one year they're unable to, you know, pull their permits for that development and they've shown good faith to develop that land, they can come back to the commission and request one more year. So you have that authority to provide a second year, a one-year extension. It can't be greater than that year. And if within those two years they're unable to obtain permits for development, it has to again be landscaped as open space or another non-parking, non-surface parking use that's approved by this body. I do wanna mention that even though they can request the two years with you, they can also go to the BZA and request additional years, but they, we'll kind of cover that at the end as part of the variances. Option two, this is accessory parking. So if you like Sherwin or some of these big developments, if they're building a lot as part of their greater project, as long as it's exclusively used for their accessory parking, it can be approved, but it has to serve a new use. So that's new development, expansion, redevelopment. So this isn't, you know, an existing residential, you know, an existing apartment building that just wants to stop paying the neighbors for parking and demo the, the building next door or something like that for their parking. It has to be a new use and that use has to be approved by the commission. So, and, and again, those can be new development expansions or redevelopments, but that has to come to this board first or this commission first to be approved. And then they can, and, and again, that could all be done in one meeting, right? But it has to be exclusive, so you couldn't have paid public parking or something like that on that. It would only be access for that use. Option three, these are action areas. An action area is basically defined within a community development plan. And within that action area, if a set of parcels are labeled as surface parking and that made sense for a plan adopted by council, then those lots could also be approved and we'd expect an applicant to show that plan and how they, how they relate. So that's pretty typical. It goes through public meeting processes. I mean, it's basically how we adopt plans. And it allows if we all have gone through a process with the community and we all sort of agree and we've adopted this plan, we can build a surface lot in that way. And then option four is vacant lots. So if you are a vacant lot part in nineteen ninety-seven, you can have a surface, a surface lot there. So obviously this was written and passed back then. It's been a quarter of a century since. So, you know, not a lot of these I don't think are still around, but it does give that, you know, that relief for when the code was passed. There's also.
I do have a question and I'm gonna stress test this. What if someone wants to restore their parking lot? They demolish it and build it. What happens then?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so really that goes to, actually, no, we were on that side. Hang on. You're, you're like time to use perfect. So the, we do give provisions for existing surface lots. So if you've been a lot, a surface lot since ninety-seven, since this passed and you wanna, you know, rebuild and maintain basically, you can do that. So, you know, it's really basically, it's legal non-conforming, but maintenance is allowed. So, you know, you wanna redo your curbs, you wanna, you know, pave, you know, repave, restripe, all those things to upkeep the lot, you can do so. We have some of those projects coming through. Actually, some of the ADA code has evolved since then. So sometimes, you know, a lot of that is like, hey, we've gotta restripe and ADA, add ADA spots or something like that. So the only issue would be that those lots could not expand in size. They'd have to come through this body and they'd have to meet the other provisions that we just covered of those four options in order to expand. So it does give you some relief if you were an existing lot before the code was passed. I do wanna cover how the commission interrelates with BZA here on variances. So there's two variances that they can request. One is to, for just the flat-out establishment of a parking lot. So if we denied it or if there, you know, there's no elements of their project that really go through the commission, they can go to BZA to try to establish. And then the temporary lot, that option one that we talked about, they can get a variance to extend, as I mentioned. And I'll cover that in a little more detail. So first, if they're seeking a variance to establish the lot, so maybe we've denied them or, you know, they're just seeking to establish a lot kind of outside of the, the process of, you know, if there's nothing that triggered a commission review, they would have to go to BZA and, and prove that they, not, not providing the variance would deprive the owner of all reasonable economic use. So if you think about downtown, there's a lot of reasonable economic uses for land. And we'll go into more details on that, but they'd have to show that there's no other means that they could use this land. There may be locations in the city where that makes sense, but, you know, some of the ones that I'll point to here. I think it's pretty clear like there's all sorts of reasonable economic uses in, in our central business district. The board does seek advice from experts in relevant fields and they consider short and long-term economic gain. But this is where authority and restrictions on that authority sort of happen, right? Like when it says they grant a variance only if they determine these things, it, it really limits, you know, the rationale down to a very, you know, fine needle there. The other one was the variance for extension of temporary lots. So if for whatever reason they came through our body, they've got an approved plan, they wanted to temporarily park, they got a two-year extension from us and they still weren't able to pull permits, they could go to BZA and request another year. The extensions are limited to one-year increments at a time, but they have to show that they're delayed by circumstances beyond their control and which would be present for all other owners in the same. So I use like COVID as a good example, like we all had to pause everything, right? And so that was something that if a, if a project was coming through at that time and had already sort of started and was in demo and then steel shot up and there was all these issues that occurred, we all would have experienced those things. And so this is made to really provide some relief and not, you know, be too overly heavy-handed with projects that are trying to move forward. And they can return to BZA year over year. They just can't get a, an extension beyond a single year at a time. Just to give a recent snapshot of kind of where we are, I'm just gonna check our time. So recently with now Director Mersman, she's created a one-pager, a policy guidance document for this code, kind of to simplify it for everyone's benefit. The code's nuanced and so I think this puts it in simple terms. Everybody likes a one-pager. It links to all the applicable resources. I think it just makes life a little easier and more efficient for applicants to understand what's there. And then we are always available to walk people through the code. And we've done so with a number of applicants just in the two years I've, I've been here. So this map just shows, well, just Orientus Public Square here. This map shows a lot of the recent projects and proposals that we've seen and just highlighting that so many of them are on the southeast side of downtown. And I pulled this up because it's, it's rare that you see such a, you know, condensed area of this type of proposal coming through. I mean, actually all, almost all fits within Councilman Starr's region. And we met with Starr many times to discuss what we're seeing happening over the last couple of years and how, what those impacts are like. Not all of these were demos for new surface lots, but you'll see as I go along here that those demolitions kind of have the same impact in a way of separating the near central neighborhoods from the downtown core. Just to give you a, a, a understanding of parking downtown, we have an incredible amount of parking downtown despite some people always being confused, right? I think we could always do better with wayfinding and signage and all those things. And we just actually looked at some of that code that was passed to kind of unify signage downtown and make it clearer. But everything you see in orange here is our parking decks and all the red are our surface lots. And we've been very successful in our central core around seeing those parking decks established. Excuse me, and then let's, let's sell at the edges. You know, we have a lot of surface lots just outside of the, the central, you know, kind of core that we think of. This just overlays those downtown districts. So again, our core district has been pretty successful. And then most of the other districts still have huge numbers of surface lots, but as development has gone on, like Flats East Bank has built in their deck, like some of the newer developments, you start to see the integration of those, those decks. And, you know, in particular, because so much of the information that we're, or the proposals we're getting are on this side, you could see like West Gateway is much more successful than East Gateway. So basically like, why is all this important, right? This is just a map that shows basically like our tax base. You know, the highest point here would be Key Tower, right? No surprises there. So downtown core, University Circle, these are generating the biggest, the largest amounts of revenue for the city. And it actually helps subsidize like say, single family in, across the city. And this parcel here, just because we saw it recently, was Rock Block. So you can see like in the central core, we get a lot of revenue and we're able to provide the services both for downtown, but the entire city through all these revenues. And when we have a, a lot sitting vacant for so, yeah, sure. It's a good question. You know. So it's, yeah, it would be taxes, basically all the components, so like retail, parking, you know. Yeah, it'd be like all, all layers. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Jobs and, and getting people to spend money, right, with taxes associated. Yeah. And this map is not perfect. Like there is some nuance to these, depending on what you're, the nuance of the tax code, these start to look different depending on those different versions. But yeah, oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, these are great, right? Urban Three did these. Well, this is some years old. Yeah, and, and sometimes be like, this is Gateway here. It probably is taller, but it sits on a wide base, like a big footprint, so it looks smaller than it otherwise is. So there's some nuance here. It's a fun map. I'm happy to pull it up on screen, you know, and fly around and, and look at things. But yeah, Rock Block, you know, when that happens is gonna shoot way up, right? We're gonna see a lot of tax revenue from that and that's actually gonna help our entire city and, and provide those things. This is Sherwin, just one of Sherwin's lots. You can see, you know, that, that difference is astronomical.
Can I just, now I'm stuck on this revenue thing.
Yeah.
That, is that, you say taxes, that also includes, include assessments for parking?
This is specific to property, but when you start to layer these over, they all basically look the same, but there's nuance in the, the heights.
I, I think the nuance here is that the map is of property value, which would, which would be the, the basis of taxation, but not tax revenue per se, based on the.
Basically, income tax was gonna track with this, though.
But, and this isn't income tax data.
There's a strong correlation, but it's not a pure correlation.
And I don't think we asked Urban Three to make all the varieties of tax maps. So, but they, we, I've seen a few of these and they, they play out very similarly. You know, the, the heights are a little bit different, but the, the ecosystem is the same. Yeah. Right, to, to the big, I'm, I'm sort of telling a bigger narrative and this is the only tool I had at my disposal, but there's a few, and I, you know, and I don't mean to, you know, call out Rock Block or Sherwin. Like this is my project at North Coast. We're not doing much tax generation for the city either. So we are trying to change that as well and update our parking lots to meet this as well. So I did wanna kind of walk through how this has played out over time. And I had a lot of help with Landmarks Commission with this as well. You can see the Colonial Hotel back there, basically the arcade. It's here. But you could see how many of those beautiful buildings we've lost over the years. And you can imagine the tax, you know, implication of that and how that impacts our ability to provide services citywide. This is another location along Prospect or Bing Co, Bing Company. You know, that's actually where Rock Block is today. So when those buildings were lost, they were lost for quite a long time. And it's been a void and for some time. So we couldn't be more thrilled to see development coming back to these locations. Oops. Hang on one second, jumped ahead. I did wanna point out something that was really, I think, important for this, this body, this commission to hear. Because years ago, when we approved those demolitions through the commission, there was some terminology used. They talked about people as refugees losing their homes and their businesses along Prospect. Um, but as they came through our commission, uh the term was um ridging the area of wig and platform shoe shops, right? So like this was clear racism at that time. And I think it's important to understand that history, especially when um as we continue to see with new proposals, some of that language, similar language is still being used today. And we'd like to think that in twenty twenty five, that's not the case, but um, you know, uh some of this displacement is specific. Um, and intentional in that way, and I want us to be very privy to that as we um see these proposals as we go along. Um, not everything is the same, so we lost some residential and commercial here. Um, certainly went through a design review process for parking. Um, it's something that we're gonna continue to have to see. It's not a service lot. Um, we are pro parking deck. It's nothing in the code that um prevents uh decks and things like that. Um, but it's something that we'll have to weigh in our central business district as as things continue to to play out is, you know, what uses go where? And uh the impacts those have. And this plays out all across the district, so this is over by Playhouse Square. Um, that's the Salvation Army building back there. Um, you could see it's still here. Um, those lots have been vacant for a long time and a number um or uh surface lots. Um, uh, but uh in a number around that area, so that's really your gateway to Playhouse Square. Um, and uh will pr- probably be another few decades, um I hope less, um to see change there. Um, but we lost some beautiful buildings.
Dan, I'm sorry, I'm fixated on parking assessment stuff. Do you have any information on how how these parking lots are doing, these surface lots, in terms of, you know, are exactly? Yeah, based on, obviously, you know that based on the assessments that are allegedly of your honest, I suppose, but.
Yeah, plays out in some interesting ways. If we just think about like a licensed um lot. Um, you know, these, especially around, say, Gateway, are are fairly lucrative. Um, they're certainly not as lucrative as, say, a, you know, a residential structure or retail. Um, but because the inputs are so low, you don't have to staff it, there's, you don't have to pay to construct a building. Um, it's it's kind of like a easy in. Um, you're talking millions of dollars in in revenue annually. Typically, like a a ti- you know, a typical sized lot, you're seeing at least a million dollars annually in revenue. Um, if you're in like the Gateway area, so it's a really easy way to um or easier way to make money, and I think that's part of why the code was passed, was because people could swoop in, buy a property, demo it, and and sit on it um for years without much uh care or input um into it. And uh, you know, um some good examples even down in um uh on Old River Road, uh the Metro Parks recently purchased a lot down there. Um, it will pay for itself um in about a seven year timeline. Um, so that's, that that property was riverfront, wasn't necessarily cheap. Um, so even where it's outside of a major, I mean, not to take anything from Flats uh East Bank, it's still a major entertainment area that gets a lot of parking. Um, you know, Gateway certainly sees a lot more. Um, even uh there, you're seeing huge uh revenues, but again, not quite as uh, I I like the way that uh better I put it, like a surface lot is providing some funding for them, but they're in the business of um, you know, larger returns. So to do that, you really need to construct. Um, I was just gonna point out that uh maybe two minutes. So this also plays out in the flats. Um, I'm sure, you know, um, you know, these are uh buildings that were really important to our history. Um, you know, we lost quite a a a nice one. Um, through this commission, actually, we were able to save this building as part of the Globe Iron Project, so that was a still um a win, but um still a void um down in that area. Um, I'm gonna jump through this quickly, but because we're really focused around Gateway. Um, we just wanted to show that there's a lot of new development that's been happening. Um, we still struggle with the narrative of we can't build in Cleveland, there's nothing happening, but the number of, you know, new development projects, um conversions, like office to residential, it's, you know, we're very busy. So um, there's a lot going on within these zones. Um, and you could see the impact of, you know, when you have a surface lot. Um, and then uh convert that into the Lumen, say, um or have a surface lot um and convert that into seven seven six Euclid. These are major, major changes in the street life changes. Um, we were um addressing the residential, i- you know, like there's a housing issue, we don't have enough housing, high quality housing, housing in the right places. Um, so you could see some of the the new development that's happening. Um, obviously, we've seen the Cav's Clinic project and um finally seeing some uh activity on our riverfront like this is is pretty exciting. Um, and Rock Block that we saw uh recently. Yeah. Pause there for a moment. It's it's great to see uh steel going up. Um, and then Rock Block too, you know, we get to see this um uh that area get filled and and that will be a a game changer for us. But even the work that we're doing on the on the North Coast yard, parking lots are kind of dead spaces. They don't uh provide a lot of value outside of peak hours. Um, we've passed a lot around safety with those recently, um but they could also be other things and more joyful things and provide um, you know, more amenities to our city um in other ways. So it's really, we we wanna be thoughtful about um the right balance of parking and especially surface parking and people. Um, I'm gonna skip through this just for uh time. Well, I do wanna pause here for a moment. Um, when we think about uh, as I mentioned, the central neighborhoods, try C, you know, ODOT really built a moat between us and, you know, like, like us, meaning where we are downtown. But we're all one city and this became a major dividing line, and I don't need to, you know, spend time with that with these members. But um the more and more of these demolitions and surface lots that we have create bigger, bigger voids between us and our community. And that really um creates two different worlds, you know, and we're trying to find ways to connect these places together. Um, and to do so better, and, you know, when you've got more than half your um land use in this area uh dedicated to surface lots, that just doesn't do it, you know. Um, so I'm gonna skip through the the other stadium um locations, but the point really here is that we've continued to kind of be at these crossroads points. Um, you know, where we could either continue to approve surface lots um and and slow our our ability to provide services for our city. Um, we could lose architectural character, things like that, or we could make the change and 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 actually, over time, the commission has been able to preserve quite a few. And so it's really about preserving the architectural character, um enhancing our walkability, our safety, um the street life in general. Um, there's a lot of uh city work that's going around to um really help these kind of concepts. Uh, TDM standards, um like I mentioned, the safety standards around parking lots and garages. Um, the tax base is huge, like the shorter core initiative, um, you know, the TIFF district. If we want to see some of these waterfront things really happen, we've got to be able to generate those TIFF funds within this district and surface lots just don't really generate much for us. Especially compared to other new development projects that will help us um do more. And that rolls over into the neighborhoods. Um, so I just wanna end with, you know, um downtown Cleveland's really the heartbeat of our whole region, and what we do here has huge implications, even parcel by parcel.
Thank you, thank you. So I wanna leave some time for any questions, comments, ideas. Um, I know we're not proving this, but um if there are any kind of thoughts, um anybody? I have one just general comment. Um, in some ways, this is how things work, like this legislation is um more of a stick than a carrot, and I use that in good terms, like this is kind of protective. Kind of like one piece of of how we're able to legislate and ensure that we um are able to get the kind of development that we want and not get the kind we don't want, right? But I think your point at the end about the TIFF districts, but thinking about is there some additional creative things we haven't thought of, or other cities have, to go down to economic development and pair this with a a carrot strategy too, which is, and and I don't know what that is in in terms of sort of like, because you need two different kinds of carrots. You need one that incentivizes that or gives some break to existing parking lot owners that makes it enticing to try to develop it. And you also need one that entices people to fix up their building and not ask for demolition. So, but I would say like, this is extraordinary, so I wanna thank you for it. I think to go one step further is in passing, this is to see, is there, is there some parallel um thing that um a program, if you will, that ED and you might develop alongside it that is the carrot piece? And that could really, uh I would say like hockey stick or exponentiate what you said, which is the kind of development that aligns with it, as opposed to wait for it to be extremely slow, which is what, I've been on the commission almost twenty years, like yes, we've had a lot of progress in terms of structured parking and other things, but it has been very incremental. Um, so that's my comment.
I I would like to make this more than inside sports or business talk. Um, I think the information you shared here should be shared with, I mean, this presentation was awesome in terms of talking about core, I mean, is, do you go to development community? Do you you sit down with banks? I mean, at the end of the day, we need to be evangelist as well, you know, and 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 think outside the four walls of of this building. So it's not a criticism, it's just, I believe it's a big opportunity, so thanks.
Did wanna just mention, um, you know, to the chair, um, we've been in a lot of discussions with ED. I think, you know, they have their siloed sort of programs, right? And and I say siloed just because I think we all just o- o- operate that way, but we're trying to um better coordinate. And um, I think um Tom McNair, Director McNair's um changes with kind of pairing us up with uh neighborhood investment managers, with planners, is really helping to do that.
He gets it. Than anyone. He gets it. It's a good, good partner there in Tom.
Building it as we go. But thank you, guys.
You, and thank you for your extraordinary work. Um, it's great, great to see. I know we're not voting, but we will be seeing this in action shortly.
And I will say, the slides you saw today will bring forward whenever we have a a project. Um, as I mentioned earlier, s- you know, we see one of these maybe once a year. Um, so it's helpful just to know like what's in the purview, um how the process unfolds. And, you know, I feel like I've read this code more than anyone in the city, so.
You're gonna be like the Shannon of signage, so we'll we'll expect that. It's a really good thing, so I agree with you. I always tell my staff and board, you have to repeat something three or four times before someone actually really hears you. So, um, so I wanna save some time for the director who might have a few um updates for the commission.
Thank you. I have a brief director's report today. Um, first, following on in the spirit and theme of this training, we will be, when time permits on agendas, bringing things like this salient um reminders of code sections, process, updates about planning activities and initiatives to the commission and to our other boards and commissions. So uh we've talked a little bit in our rules committee about some of the things that we'd like to emphasize and resurface. These presentations as part of our public meetings will also be part of a larger um cadence of trainings, probably biannually, regularly with our design review advisory committees, et cetera. And along that line, on Monday, August eighteenth, so this upcoming Monday, the Board of Zoning Appeals will be having an information only meeting where where we'll be talking about several code sections that apply to them and other key areas that are coming up in a lot of cases to the board. So if you have an opportunity or anyone listening would like to tune in to learn as well, we expect that that session on Monday will be very informative to all. Um, I want to draw attention to one item legislatively that was on the administrative approval list today. Ordinance number nine eight four twenty twenty five. This authorizes the planning commission to bring onboard paid alternates to the commission. And so we do expect to have a posting for alternates to this planning commission coming up in the next couple of months. If folks are interested in applying, that will also help us to um broaden our family, our table a little bit, and have alternates in place when commission members cannot be here.
One quick thing is, so I do know you're working on in shortly, we'll seat the seventh member. Um, I, I think you were an alternate at one time. She was the last alternate. Um, so I think you might wanna think about parallel, like if you add the alternates, I I don't think it should allow commission members just not to show up. Because they're still, you know, so I think the Rules Commission ought to set some standard by which commission members should, the amount of kind of meetings, commission members should attend per year, parallel with the alternates. Otherwise, I think the alternates just are, will 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 just exacerbate the fact that we want consistency, we want a commission that is full, that is discussing robustly. And so I think you have to pair those, so I don't know if that's the rules responsibility, but then we should codify it. And I don't know what the process is for that, but doing it all at once makes a lot of sense to me. Otherwise, we're gonna have, actually, um probably, um, I would call it, if there's too many alternates all the time, you won't have the kind of consistency that the that, even though you are a great alternate.
And and again, I'm I'm not an attorney, so if I misspeak, um, I honestly, um, in in that vein, we should, there should be a reperc- repercussion, right? If you you're habitually absent, then either, I mean, I use use the sports analogy, you get benched and the alternate moves in your place or something. I don't know what that looks like or what legally, how we can handle that, but that's the reality of it, in our, in our, my opinion.
Yeah, and I think part of the the Rules Committee, you know, maybe is just looking at the the charter language for when we all were nominated and agreed to this, like, what exactly does that say about attendance? And then if it does not have specificity, then that's what we're adding about and also the consequences.
Yes, that's exactly right, and the timing is aligned very nicely, isn't it? That we're looking at rules right now and working on the legislation at the same time. Um, my final announcement is about an event that the city is co-hosting in partnership with local chapters of AIA, APA, and A SLA. So so the local architects, planners, and landscape architects um will be across the street in public auditorium and music hall next Thursday evening. Vice Chair Luca and I will be on a panel along with um Drew Sergeant and Mark Dulick, who's an architect here at the city, talking about we're planning and design meet. It's a free event, you can register on the AIA Cleveland website, but we'd love for folks to join us. We're really excited, both about the discussion as well as the after panel tour of public auditorium and all of the hidden gems that are in there that um are not always open to the public and many folks might not know exist, so please join us.
Anything else or we're adjourned? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.